Clerk Vanegas, can you test Kobe's microphone, please, or trustee Pizzotti's microphone?
Mic check, one, two, one, two. All hands in the air. No? Yeah? There we go. There we go. It works.
DJ Al.
Hey, can everybody hear? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, is it working?
I can hear.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Good.
Welcome to the special board of education meeting, our annual organization meeting of Board of Trustees, at 5:00 PM on December 9th, 2022, in the chambers of West Sacramento, California. So roll call. Trustee Pizzotti?
Here.
Clerk Vanegas?
Present.
I am present. Vice President Kirby Gonzalez?
Present.
Okay, we are, we can open our rule now. So moving on to any public comments. I understand that there are no public comments submitted for this special session.
There were no public comments received for the 5 o'clock meeting?
Are there any members of the public who want to make any public comments? Before our oath or anything? Okay, going once, going twice. Moving on, I have the pleasure of actually calling up Dr. Rebecca Lavalley, who swear in Vice President Kirby Gonzalez, to conduct the oath of office. Like mother, like daughter. Thank you. Welcome back to the dais, Vice President Kirby Gonzalez. And now, I would like to welcome up Virginia Coffey, and the oath of office will be conducted by Don Archuleta.
We're gonna have you stand in front of the microphone so the audio can hear it.
Coffey. The script.
Here, if you want to talk into the microphone.
Right here.
Oh, Julius will be swearing in.
So Julius swearing in.
Okay, Julius.
I, Virginia Coffey.
I, Virginia Coffey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will sup- that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies. Sorry.
It's okay. I was like, it's all right. And I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will be- bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the United States of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I made up. That I will take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any med- mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That's it?
No, you read that too.
Oh.
Washington Unified School District Governing Board Member, trustee Area 1.
Great.
Yay.
Well, welcome to the dais, trustee Coffey.
Thank you.
Before we actually, I take a part of privilege for us to take a small break to go out to the reception. I want to give Vice President Kirby Gonzalez and trustee Coffey a moment to say, you can please welcome to the dais, if you want to, if there's anything you want to say. No?
No, it's, it's an honor to serve Washington Unified School District Area 5, and I'm very grateful to be on this board and to have another four years here, continuing the good work we're doing with lots of head. So, welcome. We're happy to have you. And it is an honor and a privilege to be up here and seeing it from a different angle entirely. And I'm hoping that I continue to be that voice that I said that I was going to be from the beginning. This is great. I'm excited.
Good. Well, welcome. We are going to take a small break right now so we can join our newly oaths, is that what we say? Newly sworn in trustees outside. So please join us, everyone join us outside for a small little re-
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
So we're taking a break. Do I need to motion that? Do I need to motion that? That we're taking a break?
I thought it was recess.
Recession. We're taking a recess.
Yes, yes ma'am. You guys can stand right here with the West Sacramento.
Sabrina explosion drink.
Ready? One, two, three.
One, two, three. Congratulations, trustee.
I'm like, I have, I don't know what I'm supposed to say.
You killed it, dude.
I know, right?
For being a nine-year-old and saying those words.
I can't even say those words. No.
...
Board Officers, Dr. Hildreth. Before I say that, I just wanted to thank you and this board and Trustee Barnas, who can't not be here tonight for actually allowing me to lead you during this past school year. Really grateful for our kind of the struggle that we went through during COVID and re-centering ourselves in the needs of kids and families and community and really excited about doubling down on our strategic plan that is rooted in equity and justice. And so grateful for that we can move forward as one team. Looking forward to serving with Trustee Coffey, who brings a lot of wealth, of history and knowledge, deep roots in West Sacramento, and just looking forward to serving in this new term. So with that said, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Hildreth for the reorg.
Thank you, President Wong. And before we move forward with that process, I would just like to thank you and acknowledge your year of service as president of this amazing district. And I just want you to know how grateful I am for the guidance that you have provided to me as a new superintendent and really just helping me lead up and knowing your wealth of knowledge has been so essential and helpful to the work that I have been able to lead with the support of all of the trustees and with our staff. So just wanted to publicly acknowledge you for your leadership. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Thank you so much.
So now let's move to the agenda item. And this is our annual organization of board officers. And there's just awareness for our public that under the provisions of California Ed Code 35143, the governing board is required to set an annual organization meeting within a 15-day period that commences with the date upon which a governing board elected at that election takes office. And so we announced at our meeting, our previous meeting on November 10th, that on this date, December 9th, we would have the annual organizational meeting date. And this is the meeting where we, or trustees elect a president, a vice president, and a clerk. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over.
Okay, thank you. So we will start with the office of the president as we normally do. And after that vote, we will reshuffle so that the new president can preside over the rest of the meeting. So do we have any nominations for president?
I actually have three nominations for all of them, just letting everybody know. You know, in making this nomination, I just want to mention that I, you know, in serving this past year, this past two years, you know, being effective is number one for me personally overall, ensuring that our students are put first, ensuring that our, that our partners are being heard and there's a streamline of impact and service. So I've seen this past year, just the board work along with the superintendent, just work effectively. And I'm a fan of that. And I'm going to go ahead and put that first. So I would like to nominate Jackie Wong for president for this year.
Do you have any other nominations for president?
Yeah, I would like to nominate Vice President Kirby Gonzalez as, rotationally, we've done this. President Wong took over after I was president and she was vice president. It's kind of been somewhat of a tradition that this board has followed, as well as Vice President Kirby Gonzalez filled in admirably in President Wong's absence. So I think it's a natural succession, as well as Vice President Kirby Gonzalez has been president in the past and was very successful in her leadership of the board.
All right. So we have two nominations. I will take it in order of nominations first, and we'll go there, and then we'll move forward. So thank you for the nomination. Trustee Coffey. Yeah. So the movement is, the vote is for Jackie, me, sounds weird, me to continue as president.
So I'm voting for you to be president, or?
Do you say yes or no?
Yes or no? No.
Trustee, Vice President Kirby Gonzalez.
No.
Thank you for the nomination. I will pass. So Clerk Vanegas.
So now we're moving on to?
We're going to move on to the vote.
So Sarah. So this is Sarah.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm turning to you.
Oh, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Trustee Pizzotti.
No, sorry.
All right. I appreciate the nomination, and we are now going to move on to Vice President Kirby Gonzalez for vote as president. So with that said, I will start with Trustee Coffey.
Yes.
Vice President Kirby Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee, Trustee Bart, not Bart, Trustee Pizzotti.
Do I look like Trustee Barnas? Yes, yes.
And I'm in full support, so yes.
And I am in support. So welcome, President Kirby Gonzalez. So we will switch. Oh, wait. Oh, yeah, we have to figure out. You want to, you want to serve from there and then, yeah.
Okay, so then that takes us to, thank you, I appreciate that. And that takes us to the vice president. So are there any nominations for vice president?
I'd like, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, Kobe.
I would like to nominate former Clerk Vanegas to be vice president.
He said no, I mean, oh, yeah.
I'm going to pass. I've got a lot of work coming. I, I, I.
I understand.
Yes, yes. I'd like to nominate Jackie Wong for vice president.
Okay. And you seconded nomination, I think officially, yes. Okay. And are there any other nominations? Okay, then we'll take a vote. Trustee Coffey?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Wong?
I'll vote for myself. Yes.
And Trustee Vanegas?
Yes.
And Trustee Pizzotti?
Yes.
And I too vote yes. Okay. And then that takes us to clerk. Do we have a nomination for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Virginia Coffey. I learned a whole lot. It did a lot for me. So I'd like to go ahead and nominate Virginia Coffey.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then we'll do the vote. So I will come, let's go this way this time. So Trustee Pizzotti?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Vanegas?
Yes.
And Vice President Wong?
Yes.
Okay. And Trustee Coffey?
Yes.
And I too vote yes. All right. And that now takes us to the committee updates, which we can go into. And I have those here. And usually what we do is we're pretty open about what people, what committees people would like to be on. And we'll just go through the order. And we have trustees who have been in those places before, but that doesn't mean that they necessarily want to stay or that somebody else cannot be there as well. So we'll start with the Yolo County School Boards Association, and that has been Trustee Vanegas. Would you like to stay on that role?
Yes, I'd love to continue.
Okay. And would anyone else like to be in that role?
I would like to be a backup if, is that okay?
Okay, as a backup?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we all good with that?
I think it just, we've learned, it's probably good to get some backups.
Yeah, it is. I think you're right. Okay. Okay, perfect. So now we have our city two by two. And traditionally, we do have the school board president on that. So I would like to be on that. And we also have, Vice President Wong is on that. Would you like to continue on that?
I'm okay. I can defer to some other people who want to be on the two by two. So Trustee Pizzotti wants to be on. Trustee Coffey, would you like to be on the city two by two?
Kobe does.
Oh, he does. Pizzotti wants to be.
Okay, I see your hand up. All right. I'm good with that? Okay. Then, there you go. Trustee Pizzotti, you and I will be on that. And then an alternate for that. I don't have an alternate on here. I think I was the alternate last time. Would you like to be the alternate for that? You like to be the alternate?
I can be the alternate.
Okay. So Trustee Vanegas is the alternate. Are you getting all of this as we go? Okay, good. Next up is the county two by two committee. And last up, I was on that, as was Trustee Barnas. And I know that Vice President Wong has been on that as well. We were on that together. I'm okay changing that if other people would like to be on the county two by two.
I'd like to join the county two by two.
Good. Okay. And would anyone else like to be on the county two by two?
This is different from the county school, county health and human services. Are you interested?
Okay. All right. That sounds good. So we will have Vice President Wong and Coffee. And then for an alternate, I can be the alternate for that one?
Oh, Kobe raised his hand.
Oh, sorry.
You wouldn't be alternate.
Okay.
You both can be alternates because?
That's true. We can just keep.
Is there a sequence in which you want to be first and second alternate?
Trustee Pizzotti, you be the alternate, and then I can be a backup. I know. Sometimes we need that. All right. Great. So that takes us now to the curriculum committee. And Vice President Wong was on that last time around. And we have an opening as well. So you like to do that again?
I'm open to, yeah, I'm open to anything. I'm open to opening up that seat for others who may be interested, former teachers maybe.
Yes, I would like to be on that.
Do I do that? Anyone else?
Kobe, do you want to be on curriculum again?
I can do.
Oh, I'm writing, sorry.
Curriculum?
No, thank you.
Okay. I am, I'm looking at what I'm on. I'm just on this one. So I could do that one with you. And I will get back onto that. And would anyone like to be an alternate?
Have to be the alternate.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Wong. Next is facility committee, which has been Trustee Pizzotti and Trustee Vanegas.
I'm okay to stay on or to open?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's good, considering there's a lot of historical work that you've been doing on that. So, what about that?
Do we have any backup?
Who would like to be an alternate for that?
I'll be an alternate.
Perfect. And the last one is the policy committee. And Vice President Wong is the delegate. So she is automatically on that. And I've been on that as well. And I've liked doing that work. But if anyone else would like to do policy, they could do it. You'd like to do that? Okay, you got it. All right. So Clerk Coffey and President Wong. And I can be the alternate. If we're good with that? Okay, sound good?
All right, President Kirby Gonzalez, there is an additional committee
Okay.
that I would like to propose, that we have a budget, a finance subcommittee. We have, we want to make sure that we have time to discuss very important finance matters in the same way that we're able to discuss our curriculum, our policies, our facilities. And so that's a new subcommittee that we would like to propose to begin for, starting in January, going through this year. So if you all are in agreement, if we could have two members and an alternate who would like to be on the finance and budget subcommittee?
I'm thinking in the past.
So we have to vote to establish it?
Oh, okay.
And we, I feel like the policy committee wrote up what a description would be, or do we just vote on it? That's how we did it last time. Although, if we want to vote to approve two members, to then craft that?
Yeah.
So is this, so is this action from staff that you, this is the write-up? Superintendent Hildreth, so the request is to establish it?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the justification?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so I think we need to vote to establish the committee. And then, I guess, when one falls through, like, are we, are we okay? I guess that's up for discussion. I think that makes sense, because it gets finances get weedy to have a finance committee?
Yes.
And given all the timelines and everything that's going on between everything, all the budgeting, all the changes in budgets and what's going on, I think it makes good sense. But I'm open to hearing others. So I hear.
No, I actually think that makes a lot of sense. And it seems like it's a, something we probably should have done a while ago. It's definitely a good, good committee for us to have. And I think I remember hearing at C S B A, many of the school boards had had one already, which makes a lot of sense.
So I'm trying to see how this is written on here in terms of, in terms of approving it, because we don't have it listed on here to approve it. But we do have selection for board committees. And so in terms of making an approval of it, we can add the approval of this meeting, or we could put, we have another December meeting where we could officially put it on. And then we could approve it, you know, and put it there for approval.
Okay.
Just on process. That's what I'm thinking. Okay. So let's do that. Think about if you want to be on that committee. And then if we put it on board governance, then we can approve it. And at the same time, pick two people for it.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right.
Are there any downsides? I didn't hear. Kobe and I said yes, but I didn't hear.
Does anyone have any objection to doing this committee? Okay. Well, then we have our adjournment for this meeting. And I'm looking at our schedule, because our next meeting officially begins at six. So I think we have another break as we go in. So we will adjourn this meeting right now. And then we will do our next meeting at six o'clock.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Oh, that's right. We have to take you off.
Bye, Kobe.
Bye.
Bye. Thanks for playing. Thanks for playing.